Good evening. My name is Paul Gore, Director of Community Development for the Asian Chamber of Commerce. Welcome to our first Congressional Town Hall meeting, March 31st, 2020. The Asian Chamber has been monitoring the COVID-19 situation since January affecting our Asian businesses here in Houston. And happy to put together a wonderful webinar to discuss the legislative stimulus package recently passed by Congress. We are an organization celebrating 30 years helping the Asian businesses community, business community to foster economic trade among our members. And this is the crucial topic about resources that could help your business stay afloat during these uncertain and trying times. But before we continue the webinar, I'd like to provide some housekeeping items. We'll be having a question and answer at the end of the presentation. You can ask questions through the Q and A button on the control panel located on the lower portion of your screen. If you have questions during the middle of the webinar, please submit your questions there. And we'll happy to answer it at the end of the presentation. We'll try to answer all the questions, but please forgive us if we're unable to answer a question because of time constraint. But we'll just want to let you know ahead of time. The PowerPoint and presentation will be made available on our website at the end of the webinar. So please stay engaged and don't worry about taking notes. We just want to make sure that you'll be focused because there's a lot of information that'll be covered in this short amount of time. So as I continue with this webinar, I'll be passing the mic to Amadre Ili, our Asian Chamber Board Member to be able to start her presentation. Ili?
Great, Paul. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Paul mentioned, I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the Asian Chamber of Commerce. I spent the last 15 years living in Washington DC and working both on Capitol Hill and in the White House under the Obama Administration. So my background is in policy. I'm currently working in government affairs, state and federal for the city of Houston. And so, given the current COVID-19 response that we're working on very closely with Congresswoman Garcia's office, we thought this would be a really good time to put together a presentation that the Congresswoman's office has been leading. With that, I want to just give a little bit of background. Congresswoman Sylvia Garcia represents Houston. And she, in the US Congress, serves on the House Financial Services Committee, which largely put together the, and had a lot of influence in putting together the three stimulus packages that we will be covering. And presenting and representing the Congresswoman's office is her legislator, Legislative Director, Pat Bond. And for those of you that are not familiar with titles on Capitol Hill, Legislative Director basically is the person that manages all of the policy advisors for the Congresswoman and also largely her legislative output in the office. So thank you in advance for Pat in joining today's call, today's webinar. And with that, I will hand it over to Pat to start the presentation.
Thank you, Ili, and thank you, Paul. Thank you, everybody, for participating tonight. And thank you to the Asian Chamber of Commerce for arranging this webinar. I understand it's the first in a series of webinars that I think are going to prove very valuable in understanding the legislative package is that have, and their implementation and what they mean for you as small business owners. As Ili said, my name is Pat Bond and I am Congresswoman Sylvia Garcia's Legislative Director. First, I hope you and all your families are safe and healthy. I know that you all are facing incredibly difficult and uncertain times. But Congresswoman Garcia is committed to making sure that the federal government does all that it can to minimize the economic shock COVID-19 has caused. She very much understands that rents are due tomorrow and the frustration everyone is feeling. I also just want to acknowledge that many of you have faced declining business since before the shutdown due to racist assumptions about the virus. This is abhorrent and the Congresswoman will continue to fight back against any efforts to blame one region on COVID-19. Next slide. This evening, I'm going to walk through, at a high level, the three pieces of legislation that Congress passed in March to respond to the COVID-19 virus and the economic fallout that the response has created. The first bill, the Coronavirus Preparedness and Response Supplemental Appropriation Act. This largely just gave money to the agencies responsible for the initial response. The second bill, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, focused on meeting human needs of the crisis. So nutrition assistance and also making sure people had access to sick days. So there wouldn't be financial pressure to go to work and spread the virus further among the population. And finally, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security CARES Act. This is most likely the package that you've heard the most about in the news and elsewhere. It is certainly the largest piece of legislation I have worked on in my 15 years on Capitol Hill. And its scale was designed to confront the magnitude of what the country is facing today. I'd also like to briefly point out that though there was some high profile back and forth, over March, all three of these bills passed overwhelmingly in a bipartisan manner in less than a month. I think that it's important to point that out. The media often plays up disagreements, but there's wide bipartisan support for all three of these bills. If you can go to the next slide. So, as I said, Bill Number One contains 8.3 billion overall and specifically appropriates 7.8 billion in emergency supplemental funding to support the federal response to the coronavirus outbreak. And it also allows Medicare providers to provide telehealth medical services to our patients who are in their home. And that is estimated to cost about $500 million. To support efforts to contain and address COVID-19, the bill provided $6.5 billion for the Health and Human Services Department, including 2.2 billion for the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, 1.3 billion for the State Department, and 61 million for Food and Drug Administration, and 20 million for the Small Business Administration. Within that overall total, almost 950 million was allocated to support state and local health agencies to prepare for and to respond to COVID-19 outbreaks in the United States. I know some of that money went to Texas and some of that went directly to Houston as well. And I will say that backfilling state and local coffers by having federal government take on a greater share of their spending is going to be important in the coming months as decline in tax revenue is coinciding with increased spending needs that we're seeing. As for the 20 million in the SBA, this was provided to get, allow SBA to provide for additional loans, but it truly pales in comparison to what we've passed since then. And that this, so we'll go on to the Family First Response Act. The second bill is the Family First Response Act. This bill provides additional funding for various assistance programs to support our federal response to the pandemic and assist workers facing economic hardship as a result. It appropriated 1.2 billion to agriculture and health and human services to provide additional nutrition assistance to affected areas, including low-income seniors, meals on wheels, local food banks, the WIC program for pregnant women and students who lose access to school lunch programs as a result of COVID-19-related school closures. I know that we have multiple school feeding programs that are going on throughout the Harris County area. It also grants states additional flexibility in providing nutrition aid through the SNAP program and the Child Nutrition Program. The bill require, also required private health plans to cover diagnostic testing for COVID-19 at no cost to consumers and increases federal funding for state and territorial Medicaid costs. It provided 206 million to the Defense Department, Veteran Affairs Department, and a few other departments who operate their own health programs to cover the COVID testing. I think of most interest to this audience, the bill also established a program to provide sick and quarantined workers with two weeks of emergency paid leave, including tax incentives for employers to provide additional sick days to their employees. So under this bill, you are required to provide sick leave to employees. Two weeks of paid sick leave at their regular rate of pay for any employee who is unable to work because they are quarantined and/or experiencing COVID-19 symptoms while they're seeking a medical diagnosis. And two weeks of paid sick leave at two-thirds the employee's regular rate of pay if they aren't able to come to work because of a bona fide need to care for somebody who's in quarantine or a small child. Because their school or childcare provider is closed for COVID-19-related issues. I will note that the slide is wrong here. This bill got passed pretty fast, so fast that the House had to come back and pass some technical corrections before sending it to the Senate. One of those technical corrections was to tighten it up. It's not just children under 18, it's the care, care of small children. The language on the slide reflects the first, the first bill without those technical corrections, so I apologize for that. Now, this benefit is capped at $105 per day for sick leave and $200 for the family leave per day. So employees would be limited to $5,000 in aggregate for sick leave and 2,000 for family leave. So obviously, Congress doesn't want to impose a mandate without paying for it. So in order to address that, we, Congress established a 100% refundable tax credit against the employer's 6.2% Social Security portion of payroll taxes on wages and on your 1.45% Medicare tax. So this credit is available from now until the end of the year. To take advantage of the, of these credits, businesses can retain and use the funds from which they otherwise would have paid IRS in their payroll taxes. We actually came back and cleaned this up a bit in the third bill. And Congress now allows, allowed employers to receive an advanced tax credit from the Treasury Department in cases where the benefits to be paid to employees would exceed their payroll tax credit. So rather than having to be, wait to be reimbursed at a future date, you could get this advanced. And Treasury has, and IRS has some additional information about that. Let's see, so finally, the, the bill provides a billion dollars in grant funding to help states manage and expand their unemployment insurance programs during the COVID-19 pandemic. This comes in several tranches based on unemployment levels. And it also extends additional benefits for 26 weeks if state unemployment rate is increased by 10% or more. And the federal government picks up the tab for those additional weeks. I know 10% unemployment is sort of amazing from where we were just a few weeks ago, but we are already seeing record numbers of unemployment. The bill also subsidized states with access to interest-free loans to help pay for regular UI benefits through the end of the year. We also took steps to require states to temporarily ease eligibility requirements that might be limiting access to UI during the COVID-19 outbreak, such as work search requirements, waiting periods, or even the, if there are increases in employer UI taxes, if the employer has high layoff rates, looking at easing all of those requirements. Now, those are all done on a state-by-state basis, but we're trying to push those through. And I know that, that, that work is being done. And finally, it provides, it requires the Department of Labor to provide technical assistance to states that want to set up work, work-sharing programs in which employers can reduce hours instead of laying employees off. Employees would then also receive partial unemployment benefits to offset the wage loss. So if you had two employees and you cut their hours in half so that they are sharing a job, they would be eligible or partial, could be eligible for partial unemployment benefits. We can go over to the next slide. So some, someone will probably write a book about this bill one day. The CARE Act, the CARES Act is an enormous $2.2 trillion economic rescue package. I'm just going to hit on some of the bigger programs that I think are most relevant to the small business community. And so this is by no means an exhaustive list of provisions. I will say that this is not a traditional stimulus program. This is a bill to try and keep family budgets and businesses alive until the worst of this virus pandemic has passed so that we can be, begin to open the economy again. We want to make sure that your businesses can survive if we have to stay shut down for any extended period of time. Let me start with the direct payments. This is probably the biggest question the Congresswoman has gotten asked immediately after the bill passed. Who qualifies for direct payments? So direct payments will be $1,200 per adult or 2,400 for a married couple filed jointly. Now filing jointly, now this has some income limits. If you have an AGI of over $75,000, it phases down $5 for every $100 of additional income. If you work out the math, it zeroes out if you have an AGI over $99,000. Those AGIs are more for a head of household and $150,000 for married couples filing jointly. It also contains a provision for a $500 payment for each child who would have qualified for the child tax credit that's 16 or younger. If you had a, and, and this is all going to be based on your 2019 tax filings. If you're like me and have not yet filed your 2019 taxes, this will be based on your 2018 tax filings. If you just had a baby, the IRS doesn't know that you've had a child, you will not get that $500 until you file your 2020 return, 2020 returns. So these payments will go to you via direct deposit on file, that you have on file with the IRS. Or if you didn't have that set up, a check to your last address on file. There will also be a system to make a claim if you didn't receive a check and feel that, that you were owed. You do need to have a social security number in order to qualify. So unfortunately, this means some in the immigrant community might not qualify despite being part of our economy. But, but that's the rules as it currently stands. I will briefly say that low-income individuals who didn't file taxes can qualify. But I won't go into further details unless we get a question about it. There's also some ambiguity about guidance and implementation on that right now. I also want to talk a little more about unemployment insurance here. The big thing that we did in this bill is that in addition to the unemployment that an employee might be due, they will also receive an additional $600 a week for four months. This level was established to make the average worker whole. Obviously, that it means that some may be over or underpaid, but the policy idea is to keep people from being harmed when the government has essentially shut down their workplace. Unfortunately, the unemployment system has largely been overwhelmed in the last several weeks. The phones to the Texas Workforce Commission have been clogged. I know that the website has been difficult. It has been one of the key issues that we have heard about in the Congresswoman's office. If you have employees who, or you are seeking unemployment insurance, I would just encourage them, encourage you to continue applying if the, the system was not designed for the volume that we are currently seeing. Why don't we go on to the next slide? So the, now, I think this is the biggest section of the bill for most of you on, on the call. It is 350, the $350 billion Paycheck Protection Program. And this is intended to hold your businesses over and, and hold your employees over until we can come back. These are, these are loans. These are for small businesses with 500 or fewer employees, including nonprofits, veterans organizations, self-employed individuals, sole proprietorships, and independent contractors. Those would all be eligible. There are a few businesses that were, more than 500 employees would qualify, but, but for the most part, this is a small business of under 500 employees. The new loan program also will be retroactive from February 15th. So if you laid off employee, employees, you can rehire them and operate under this program. So it's, the loan program is going to be operational retroactively to February 15th, forward to June 30th. And let me quickly list through some of the loan features. The maximum loan amount is going to be up to $10 million. All loans under this program will have an interest rate of 0.5%, a maturity rate of two years. The first payment will be deferred for six months. They will be 100% guaranteed by the SBA. No collateral will be required. No personal guarantees will be required. And no borrower or lender fees will be payable to the SBA. The law does require a good faith certification that the loan is needed due to economic conditions due to COVID-19. So if your business is booming, you are probably not on this call, but this might not be the program for you. Starting on, on April 3rd, small businesses and sole proprietorships can apply. And starting April 10th, independent contractors and self-employed individuals can, can apply. And I would encourage and, and you all to apply as quickly as you can because there is a funding cap. And the goal of these loans, you know, is not to, to get people into more debt. These loans are to, are designed to be forgiven. And I'll quickly go over the requirements for loan forgiveness. If the proceeds of these loans are used for payroll costs and other designated business operating expenses in the eight weeks following the date of the loan origination, these loans can be forgiven. 100% of these loans can be forgiven. You know, we are now expecting very high subscription of this program. And so not more than 25% of the forgiven amount can be for non-payroll costs. And in order to qualify for this, you either must keep employees on payroll or rehire quickly. So forgiveness is based on the employer maintaining or quickly rehiring employees and maintaining salary levels. Forgiveness will be reduced if headcount falls or if salaries or wages decrease. And I cannot stress this enough, go and talk to your lender. They are going to be overwhelmed, but I've talked to, to many regional and community banks, they are preparing for this. So they, so tomorrow morning, I would recommend everybody find time to talk to lender. You don't have to interact with the government for this program. Your lender will do this on your behalf. I'm sure some of you might have traditional SBA 7A loans. This will be easier than that process because these loans are designed to be forgiven. You know, the underwriting standards are a little looser here. So if we can go on to the next slide. This bill also contains funding for some SBA's more traditional programs. We appropriated, Congress appropriated 10 billion in emergency grants to provide immediate relief if you have small businesses with liquidity issues. To help small businesses with existing SBA-backed loans, the CARES Act provided 17 billion to the SBA to pay for the monthly interest, principal, interest, and fee payments on all existing SBA loan products for your outstanding SBA loans for six months. So existing SBA-backed loans currently in deferment, a business would receive six months of payment once the deferral period ends. And the SBA is, is encouraging lenders to provide deferments and allow lenders to extend loan maturity dates beyond existing limits. So again, if you have a traditional 7A loan that's SBA-backed, talk to your lender. They are going to be the, the place where a lot of these, these programs happen and they will help you navigate the small business 7A program. Go on to the last slide. We have a couple of resources up here. These, I believe, have already been posted on the Asian Chamber of Commerce website. This includes details about all of these programs. The Payroll Protection Program from the Senate Small Business Committee is very detailed, we'll walk you through this. So I'd encourage you to look at those resources. Now, I think that we have maybe 30 minutes left for questions. I will say in advance that many of the details of implementation remain unknown. The law is only five days old. And SBA and Treasury just put out guidance several hours ago related to the program. The IRS put out guidance this afternoon that is contrary to what Congress anticipated.
Can someone please mute their phone that's on the call? Thank you.
Ili, do we have any questions?
Okay, great. Yes, we do. Thank you so much, Pat, for going through those heavy legislative packages. The first question that we have is from Naomi. And her question is, how does this loan work for an independent consultant through SBA?
So Treasury and the SBA have not yet put out guidance that I have seen for independent contractors will be, the first day to apply will be April 10th. I have not yet seen the guidance that Treasury and SBA will put out on that. So I think that that is an open question. But again, the first day for those applications would be on April 10th for independent contractors and self-employed individuals. So you could apply for them then, the, the details I don't have for you yet. But again, if you use that loan to pay, set your salary, that would be forgiven.
Okay, thank you for that response. The next question is from Pedro, and he's And he's asking, what is the turnaround on loan applications?
We don't yet know how long these this these will take because they haven't opened up yet. The the name of the game is speed here. We want these to go out as fast as possible. Lenders understand that and but lenders are also going to be overwhelmed. I've talked to several several lenders who are trying to pull their small business teams together to make sure that they can service their clients. We want these need to be turned around in days and weeks. This is not a month-long process.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you for that. The next question is, what were the dates for the contractors and individuals, et cetera, to apply by?
Okay, so it's April 3 for small businesses and sole proprietorships and April 10 for independent contractors and self-employed individuals. Now, that's when you can apply. And the program is open for application until June 30. However, I would recommend that you apply earlier. The program does have a $350 billion cap. That sounds like a tremendous amount of money. However, Treasury has indicated that they expect the program to be oversubscribed. So you should move sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you for that. The next question is from Kenneth. And the question is, as a landlord, my tenants cannot pay their rent, and I have to pay my bank for my commercial loan. Any programs that can help me with that, like the mortgage payment, for example?
There have been several administrative changes that have again, this is a situation where I would encourage you to speak with your lender. There have been several administrative changes by regulators, including the Federal Reserve, which allow banks to offer deferments without those deferments being held against the bank for short periods of time. So I would encourage you to talk to your lender about that because they might have, they have been given additional flexibility that they might not have had a month ago.
Okay, that's very helpful. Now, I don't see any additional questions. So I want to remind all participants that if you have any questions for Congresswoman Garcia's Legislative Director, please go ahead and use the Q and A box. Now, a couple of things that since we oh, let's see here, I think we do have more questions. Give me one second. Oh, here we go. We have another question, and then I'll ask to elaborate on something prior to us ending. So from Jeremy, in reference to the CARES Act, you mentioned as a business owner, I need to keep employees in full-time and regular pay rate. I have to cut my employees' hours to half. Would I still be eligible for applying for the loan?
You could apply for the loan. The forgiveness of the loan would not would be reduced. The amount of the loan that could be forgiven would be reduced as headcount declines and as salaries decrease. So it's still a low-interest loan, but it wouldn't turn itself into a grant with it with a full forgiveness. The idea is to to maintain as much employment as possible.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. Next question is, I owned a real estate agency. Most of my agents are independent contractors. Are they qualified for any particular program?
Independent contractors are listed as eligible for the they also
Reminder, anyone that's participating, please mute your phones unless so that way we don't have any interference. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Pat.
And there are also, I have not had a chance to look at what the Texas Workforce Commission is doing about expansion of unemployment benefits to independent contractors as well. But those are state-specific decisions. I would say that unemployment might be easier if they can qualify. However, independent contractors do qualify, are eligible under the Paycheck Protection Program.
Okay, very helpful. Thank you. Next question is from June. Can you explain a little further about unemployment share or reduced hour program? And apologies if you're repeating some of this information.
So this is, the Department of Labor is putting out new standards for that. I believe those just came out or are coming out today, and they're and that was designed, I apologize, I don't have that information. I will, I will forward, I will try and find that information and give to the chamber so that they can post in their business resources section.
Okay, yes, you can definitely direct that over to me. And I have a little bit of further information that June has sent over to give you some context with regards to that question. He is stating, we are a dental office, so we are currently not allowed to open for elective procedures. So we are open for a very short hour, for short hours daily. If we are approved for this loan, does it mean I will issue paychecks to my employees based on their average hourly in the next eight weeks just regarding if they are at the office working or not?
Yes, so in order for the loan to be forgiven, the employees would have to be maintained at their regular rate, not at the rate that they would qualify for for their reduced hours. Alternatively, the employees could try and claim partial unemployment benefits based on the reduced hours.
Okay. Thank you for that. Next question is from Pedro. Are there any advanced stipulations where small businesses would get partial funding upfront?
Partial funding upfront. And can you elaborate on the question?
Sure, so I believe the question is asking if there are any provisions in the bill itself that would allow for any advance or partial funding. I'm assuming what Pedro was trying to say is prior to the actual application fully getting processed through SBA or any agency.
So I have, I am aware that some lenders are looking to provide short-term bridge loans until the Paycheck Protection Program loans can come through. But there is not necessarily direct cash. The only exception to that, as I was talking about, is if you have an employee who has to take, who you need to pay sick leave to, you can get an advance from Treasury. You can, you can claim that money from Treasury.
Okay, thank you for that. Next question is from Holly. The question is, let me see here, Realtors are commission-based. How would unemployment benefits apply here?
And again, I am not directly familiar with the Texas Workforce Commission's rules. However, it I know that some states have allowed average, average earnings to be calculated into that process. But again, they could also qualify under the Paycheck Protection Program as independent contractors.
Okay, thank you for that. Next question is from Jay. Do you have any details about payroll tax deferment instead of the current quarterly scheduled tax payment? Are we able to defer those payments to next year?
I do not have information on that separate from the required pay or family leave, which have a credit. I have, I don't have any information about deferments. I can work to find something on that for you.
Thank you so much. And for those of you that are participating, any questions that we are unable to currently answer, we will work with the Congresswoman's Office to ensure that we get that over to you. Next question is, how about nonprofit organizations? Can they apply for any programs? Also, for those who do not have permanent residence but own a small business in Houston, can they apply?
So let me take this, the nonprofit one first. Nonprofits will be considered non, will be considered small businesses for the purposes of the Paycheck Protection Program. So nonprofits can apply. I believe if a business qualifies for the SBA program, if it's been involved with the SBA program before, it would qualify for the Paycheck Protection Program. The direct payments, as I said, require a social security number. The Paycheck Protection Program would work with a taxpayer identification number, but I am not certain of how immigration status would play with, would interact with the Paycheck Protection Program.
Okay, is that something that we can follow up with you on as well?
Absolutely.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Next question is from June. Does PPP apply to both full-time and part-time workers?
Yes, so if as long as, so if you were, if they were working part-time, if employees were working part-time before, you could take out this loan, pay them, but they would have been making part-time for these eight weeks. You wouldn't have had to increase them to a full-time status to qualify. It's it's the continuation of employment.
Okay, very helpful. Thank you so much. Next question is from Jeremy. Would the lender let me know whether the loan can be forgiven before the application submission?
The loan forgiveness is conditioned on the employer's actions with the loan. So you cannot guarantee that the loan will be forgiven because because the the loan forgiveness requires the employer to maintain maintain employees on payroll at their salary levels. So only if that condition is met will the forgiveness occur. So they, the lender will be able to tell you, if you do this, then it will be forgiven, but they can't guarantee it.
Great. So with that, we have roughly 15 minutes of your time left. I do have one final question and then request. The last question is from Jeremy, and he is stating he may have missed the information, but where can he find lenders' contact information for the CARES Act loan application?
So I would encourage you to go to your, your existing lender. If you have a relationship with an existing lender or go to a bank or credit union that has an established 7A, Small Businesses Administration, 7A loan program. I can't direct you to particular lenders.
Great, thank you so much. We do actually have one more question from June. Will PPP also apply for independent contractors that I pay monthly? For example, our associate dentist who are receiving a $10.99 from us?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Okay, is that something that we can follow up with you on?
We can try and follow up on that. That might be dependent on Treasury guidance, which I'm not sure has fully come out yet.
Okay, well, that's helpful to know that it is pending another agency's guidance also. So that panelists and participants all understand that this is a fluid process that everyone is working together on. With that, I, it looks like we are out of questions. Let me just make sure because I tend to not scroll down on the question box. Oh, we are out of questions. And with that, if you could just take a couple of minutes to provide some insight to those that are participating on what to look out for next coming out of Congress based on your understanding in terms of any additional, you know, potential stimulus packages, any updates on, you know, changing changes like within the current packages? Just whatever insight you think would be appropriate to share with, with the participants would be really helpful.
Absolutely. So I think that Congress is beginning to look at a fourth package. I think that it is not yet clear on what that package will be. Will that be another extension of this package to try and keep families and businesses whole as we continue to deal with the pandemic? Or will it be an economic recovery and stimulus package? Which we would certainly hope that that is what we do when we are coming out of this pandemic and getting everybody back to work. There are numerous changes that Congresswoman Garcia would like to see in any package going forward, making more dependents eligible for the $500 rebate, making sure that all immigrants can participate in the, these packages. There also are massive infrastructure programs that people are looking at, including telecom issues. I think that as more and more work is happening remotely, like this webinar, the importance of broadband connectivity has been raised. So, you know, and this is in addition to traditional stimulus packages of roads and bridges and harbors that are so important to Houston. So all of that is on the table. I think that that will be several weeks. I do not anticipate the fourth package moving as quickly as these first three. We hope to get some of this implemented and and to to stop the immediate pain that we know everybody are are in right now.
Great, well, thank you so much for sharing that insight. And before I hand over the mic to Paul for some, some additional housekeeping, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the Asian Chamber. And Pat, I'd like for you to also please relay over to Congresswoman Garcia that we really appreciate her leadership on the Financial Services Committee and also on, in the Congress representing Houston and all the small businesses in Houston, most especially, of course, most especially, of course, for the Asian Chamber. With that, we will follow up everyone on the call and on the webinar. We will follow up with, with the Congresswoman's staff on any outstanding questions that were not answered. And with that, I will hand over the mic to Paul for some housekeeping. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And thank you, Pat and Ellie, for putting this webinar together. Just want to ask, answer kind of the last question to what Jeremy asking for lenders' contact. The chamber has several bank members who actually are SBA-approved loan loan officers and loan banks will be putting out some information on that to our members and to the public for them to be able to apply through our member banks and then they could be able to approve or at least review your particular application for this. Yeah, for this particular process. In that saying, I just want to remind and let you guys know that we'll be posting the presentation along with the resources Pat talked about on our website with the link that is below and I provided earlier throughout this conversation. Also, I want to let you know about the upcoming webinar, which will be talking about an in-depth explanation of the recent CARES Act, which will be on Thursday at 2:00 PM, as well as a members orientation on Friday to learn about being a member and the benefits of joining. Actually, next week, we'll be having another webinar from our bank, ACC members, that can provide more clarity on the application process. And we also hope to have something from the Labor Department to give guidance on employers and employees. For those who are not members, we actually are offering at this moment, two months free trial membership to experience some of the resources and benefits of joining. So please check out our website, www.ascencamber-hou.org to get up-to-date information about what we're doing. And if you're not on the email blast, please sign up because we want to have you stay connected. And please join us on social media. You can find the links on top of our website when you go to our website. Again, thank you for spending your evening with us. Please reach out to the chamber if you have any questions. We're just happy to help. Good evening and good night, and we hope to have you attend some of our future webinars. At this moment, we'll go ahead and end this meeting shortly. Thank you so much, guys.